Ubusutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the January 7th Water Agency Meeting. Call to order and roll call, please.
Director Vasquez?
Here.
Director House?
Here.
Director Pierre?
Yes.
Director Bradford?
Here.
Director Messick?
Here.
Director Matthews?
Here.
Director Bishop?
Here.
Okay, Director Matthews is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Mandy?
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the Board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments periods are limited to three minutes per person and the total amount of time for public comment is fifteen minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the Board Chair announces public comment period. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. The multiple members of the public wish to speak, the Chair will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly to ensure proper conduct. The Board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any member of the public violating generally accepted principles and perform an official public meeting. Do we have any in-person public comment? And there's no virtual public comment?
All right. If anybody comes in late, would we let them have their public comment in case they're coming from the governance center?
Yes.
So if anybody comes in, we'll ask them. All right, approval of content items.
I'll move to approve.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
I vote.
Discussion items, election of officers. I'm going to turn it over to Mandy now.
Do we have any nominations for Chair Director Matthews?
We have the same played of officers for the new year.
Okay, we're going to do Chair person and we'll do Vice President nominating Director Messick.
I nominate Chair.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for Chair? Okay, no other nominations, we'll go and do ahead a roll call then. Director Bishop?
Aye.
Director Bradford?
Aye.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Pierre?
Yes.
Director Messick?
Yes.
Director House?
Yes.
Director Matthews?
Here.
Yes.
Motion passes. Director Messick will be our Chair for 2025. And now open up nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Director Bishop.
Director Bishop, okay. Do we have a second?
Oh, that's second half.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call then. Director Bishop?
Aye.
Director Bradford?
Aye.
Director Vasquez?
Aye.
Director Pierre?
No.
Director Messick?
Yes.
Director House?
Yes.
Director Matthews?
Yes.
Motion passes. Director Bishop will be our Vice Chair for 2025.
Room turn twice.
Okay, thank you guys. You're complimenting me for another year. Okay, public hearing. Full of public hearing and consider adopting resolution 2025-01. Many groundwater sustainability plans that will be the sustainable water management plan. Just going to head this up.
Charles.
Good morning. Right, Chair of the Board, the Board members, the public, and agency staff. My name is Charles Johnk. I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator for the Agency with the Water Resources Department and responsible for implementing the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA, and our Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Today, I'm going to present to you how the Agency has complied with SIGMA over the last several years and our groundwater sustainability plan, as well as why we decided to amend our plan and recommend that the Board adopt our new amended plan today. I'm also present here with Jim Blankie, a consultant hydrogeologist for Lurin Kern, has also helped us write our groundwater sustainability plan, implement SIGMA, and supports our groundwater substitution transfers under the UVA Accord. But Jim will give a little questions as well. All right, I'm excited.
Any question? I have a question.
Okay.
As we are getting bigger and able to do any number of things, the septic systems really need to go in way of the horse and buggy in Yuba County, especially with your water table as high as it is. You know, you've got all of Hurst Linda, certain areas that, you know, just not functional at all. We don't need that attitude groundwater. It's bad enough as it is now. It's just like to pursue this next year.
Can we point to what we're doing?
We don't want to be like Orange County without the processing center first.
So let's see, back to the previous one. So what is SIGMA? Previous one. But as many of you know, SIGMA is legislation that established statewide framework for the sustainable management of the groundwater for the first time in California's history. It was enacted due to an over-reliance on groundwater in many parts of the state, which caused lowering of groundwater levels, which caused wells to go dry, subsidence, seawater intrusion, and impacted areas where there's surface water. The basins of surface water were in these connections with groundwater. And so the goal of SIGMA is to reduce overdraft of groundwater basins and bring pumping and recharge into balance within a twenty-year horizon when the groundwater sustainability plan is adopted. Excellent. Okay, so what does SIGMA require? Permission of groundwater sustainability agencies, or GSAs. Yuba Water Agency became a GSA shortly after SIGMA was enacted in 2015. And we are a GSA of the North and South Yuba Sub Basin. Porta Irrigation District and the City of Marysville are GSAs in the North Yuba Sub Basin. SIGMA also requires development of groundwater sustainability plans, or GSPs. And historically, that was a 2020 for critically overdrafted basins and 2022 for high and medium priority basins. So the North Yuba is considered a medium priority basin and the South Yuba a high priority basin. And that's mainly due to, at least in the South Yuba, there's more irrigated plants. There's future growth, there's future growth projected. So our GSP was approved by the Department of Resources in January 2021. Now, it's important to note that we have a long history of proactive groundwater management within the Agency that goes back to the foundation of the Agency, our water supply agreements with the member units, collaboration with other water purveyors in the county, and through the UVA Accord and groundwater substitution and transfers, we have a robust groundwater, we had a robust groundwater management plan. So the transition to becoming a GSA was pretty smooth. The Yuba basins have been sustainably managed for many years. So SIGMA also requires that GSPs include measurable objectives and milestones in increments of five years, which is sustainability within two years of adoption, and then development as the open and transparent. But... So within the plan, contents include executive summary, an introduction of planned area, a basin setting which includes details about conceptual model that we've developed, groundwater conditions, has water budget information, information about our monitoring networks for groundwater levels, and streamwater drainage stations, has criteria for sustainable management, identifies projects and management actions, and a plan for implementation. The plan is available on our website for demo. Excellent. All right, so since adoption in 2020, we developed five annual reports. We've held twenty groundwater sustainability committee meetings with stakeholder participation that include many local municipalities within Yuba County and nonprofit groups. You can see a map of the North Yuba Sub Basin on the right side of the screen there. It shows the boundaries of the basin and the boundaries of Porta, GSA, and Marysville. We've also held five inter-basin coordination meetings, the meetings with our neighboring sub-basins. We've continued smart groundwater levels and groundwater quality and we've implemented projects from grant funds. We have a grant through the Prop 68, and we're working on several projects. And overall, groundwater levels are healthy and they've rebounded from dry years of 2020 and 2021 to wet years of 22 and 23. Last year was an average year, still helped out, and we haven't had any groundwater substitution transfers in the last two years. So the basin has recovered and is healthy. Excellent. All right, so SIGMA requires GSAs to evaluate their plans every five years. So we've been working on that over the last year. And we've decided to amend the plan for several reasons, mainly due to recommendations by the Department of Water Resources for our 2020 Groundwater Sustainability Plan. We've made modifications to our monitoring networks by adding groundwater wells and new stream drainage stations. There's new, we've added new data available for our new groundwater model, and we have provided some projects and management actions. So over the last year, we've had stakeholder input through five groundwater sustainability committee meetings and a thirty-day comment period this last fall to review the amended GSP. Excellent. Okay, so today we're recommending adoption of the amended GSP by the Board. And if that occurs, then we'll submit the amended GSP to the Department of Water Resources by the end of the month. And then that kicks off a timeline for a TWR to review our plan up to two years and include the succeeded public meeting period. And in the meantime, we'll continue to implement our current plan. And that's all I have for today. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
From Chair?
Yeah.
The original plan in 2020, what's the cost of that? What do we spend per year on it?
That's a good question. I don't recall the exact estimate of this, the original plan, but implementation of the plan, we estimated between $500,000 and $1 million per year, depends on which, if we have major projects occurring?
I'm just asking because in the report didn't show what the, it just said refer back to the original cost and increase the original cost by, you know.
Okay.
And then the other question I have is just that the, were there any comments that that comment period came through?
There were, there was one comment from CDFW California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and that was maybe occurring stream, or about stream deflections.
Thank you.
The difference between the North Basin and the South Basin is that the South Basin has a, an action level of 150 feet. Where in the North Basin, an action level is 50 feet. And the reason that the level was 150 is that's where they were down to when we brought surface water down there in the early eighties. And now that basin, I believe, has like 1,200,000 acre feet of recharge. My question is, is that in the long term, we have the North Basin with a 75-foot limit and most of the groundwater is between 75 feet and 150 feet. Why we're limiting ourselves to the 50 feet? Because in the future, that could restrict us if people were irrigating their orchards, which have no other way than groundwater. And if groundwater goes below 50 feet, we could get actions like they have in the San Joaquin, where all of a sudden, they were sent letters, turn your pumps off. Is that in the long-term advantage for us to have a lower level? Even though we don't want to achieve it just with the idea that we wouldn't ever subject ourselves to a shut-off because of it?
Right. They refer to measurable criteria for threshold, measurable thresholds in the plan, and I'm going to cut that one to Jim here.
Yeah, so you're right, we did set minimum thresholds within the North and South Yuba Sub Basin based on the deeper, either the shallow's domestic well or the historical well. So what happens is because the South Yuba Sub Basin had depressed groundwater levels back in the early 1980s before surface water came in through the South Canal, those areas regardless historically were down to 150 feet, right? And those thresholds there are lower, down to 150 feet in that area. And the North Yuba, where there's been historically very stable, sustainable groundwater conditions forever, that historical low isn't very low, and the shallow's domestic wells are often fairly shallow. We wanted to make sure there was flexibility for the users of groundwater moving forward, so we didn't set it right at that historical low or the shallow's domestic well. Instead, we moved to 75 feet below ground surface. So it's either the, it's the deeper of the shallow's domestic, the historical low, or 75 feet. So in the North Yuba, where groundwater levels have historically been very high, that 75 feet tends to be where our threshold is. And historically, what we've seen with groundwater levels is while the depth that you're accessing for groundwater may be at kind of 75, 100, 150 feet, the groundwater levels are typically much higher than that and stay much higher than that. And so we believe that there's substantial flexibility above that 75-foot zone. But we also looked into what our neighbors are doing within the Sutter Sub Basin, within the Lion Creek Sub Basin to the north, to see if there was opportunities to move that lower, to provide more flexibility. What we've seen so far is that the thresholds surrounding this are a little bit shallower than what we are. So to go deeper than 75 feet would probably be a little bit challenging, but it is a plan that is a living plan, and so it's something that we can address moving forward. We continue to look into that to make sure we provide as much flexibility as we can and we don't unintentionally go into the states' purview moving forward like you're talking about in the San Joaquin. So we are aware of that, we are tracking that, making sure that we have.
So you're saying that even though we have the 75, we're not precluded from lowering it in the future if we so intend to?
It's a locally defined threshold? That's right, it's locally defined threshold. We're able to modify that. You have to go through an open process, make sure all the stakeholders are aware of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and why it's not significant and unreasonable as defined by SIGMA, and we can move forward with that modification. Thank you.
All right.
Director Messick, as a reminder, this is a public hearing item, so we do want to make sure that we formally open, accepting public comments.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing now. If there are anyone from the public that wish to ask questions, speak on this.
Moving to the, uh...
Wait, one more. No virtual comment?
I did have a question. So the recharge came back from the eighties. Water levels are much higher. But there was mention in the statement by the DWR that there was bar quality degradation, and that was done by the pumping. And I wasn't clear if that was something that was of the minimalist nature or if it was significant, and if it was from the recharge pumping or from the outbuild pumping. So if I can get a little more information on what the water degradation level was and if it's significant.
Earl, Virgil? Yeah. I didn't get that one. So we don't necessarily agree with the department that we have ongoing groundwater degradation within this Yuba Sub Basins. We have a good number of monitoring wells throughout the basin that track that. Some of those wells, most of those wells are pretty stable. Some show declines, some show increases. With groundwater quality data, often there are kind of localized issues. And we mentioned the septics earlier, right? So often there are localized issues you have to account for. But from a regional standpoint, we don't see regional degradation. One of the things that we have done within the plan is to develop a new groundwater quality monitoring network. So when we developed the initial plan, we had a network of eight wells that were historically monitored for groundwater quality by the Department of Water Resources. Department of Water Resources ended that program about a year after we adopted the GSP. So we had to scramble up, develop a new program. We have a new program that has substantially more wells, so it's going to give us a greater resolution on that water quality and have a better understanding of the current status of groundwater quality and how that groundwater quality is changing over time.
Okay, so from our side of it, there is not water degradation quality level situation?
Yeah, there's isolated areas, the same as there are in any basins, but from a regional standpoint, there's not a regional groundwater quality issue.
Okay, and then from their viewpoint, was it because of the recharge pumping or was it from the outbuild pumping that was causing the issue to them?
So I'm going to clarify, when you say outbuild pumping, I want to understand what you're asking.
When we're taking the water out of the aquifer as opposed to...
And using it on-site?
Or transferring it?
So that's why I'm asking this question. When we do groundwater transfers, let's just be very clear for everyone here. When we do a groundwater transfer, water does not leave our aquifer and go into a river.
Okay.
So it's used on-site or it remains in the ground there. There's no outflow of groundwater into, let's say, the Yuba bed of river from our system.
Okay. So is it the pumping, I guess my question is more specifically is, is it the pumping up or the pumping down that's causing, according to the state, the water degradation? Through the Chair to that question. Right now, we don't have any recharge pumping, so we're not pumping water down into the ground, if that I correctly understand. Okay, so it was all from coming out? Okay.
All right, through the Chair. The state says we don't have a problem. The Water Department says we don't have a problem, but take and wash your car with this stuff that's in Linda coming out of the ground. I think we should look into testing our water locally because the state's not going to help us and find out what's actually in there. Because if you really want to see how polluted it is, wash your car. It's, it etches paint in that area.
So can we just get a clarification between water hardness and pollution? Yeah, so water hardness, often you, when you wash your car and you get like spotting and things like that, right? You get mineralization that occurs, it's not detrimental to public health.
I know with Yuba City, we got river water. It was snowpack. That's a big difference.
There is a difference.
There's no reason that we shouldn't come up to some kind of usable quality water you can drink. Because there are certain areas in Yuba City that can't drink water either.
So again, I just wanted to clarify, we're talking about water in Yuba County, and I want to talk about the water hardness versus a contaminated water supply. I'd just like to have clarity there. And I guess from a user standpoint, if you do use water and you see white spots, that's not necessarily an indicator of contamination. It's an indicator of normally hardness. I just want, Jim, you're the professional on this. Could you clarify, I want to make sure that that's how we all understand what we're doing?
Yeah, no, that's definitely the case. Hardness and mineralization in water is, you know, it's not detrimental to public health. There is aesthetic issues, right? Spotty and taste that can come from those kinds of issues, but it's not considered a contaminant and it's not something that would, you know, make that water hazard risk.
Water, I've got two suggestions on my hands. So I think it's something we should look into. There's not a reason for not having river water. I mean, the difference is immense. You know, those of you who've had drank the water, you know, it's not, it's not tasteful, I should say.
My other question from the report was something called sanitary seals going to the 75-foot depth. And there are going to be regulations enforcing that. Can you explain a little bit more about what that means?
Yeah, so the sanitary seal, when you dig a well, your well is, you know, basically a vertical pipe that has slots at the bottom to let the water come in at some depth. You surround that pipe with sand at the bottom so the water can enter that pipe. And then as you go up, you use like a bentonite cement slurry type thing. And so the upper portion of that is that kind of cement bentonite clay slurry. And that prevents water from the surface from getting into that hole and down to where you're taking your water from, right? So it keeps those contaminants out, so your water supply is protected. Current regulations require a 20-foot sanitary seal, so you have 20 feet of that cement clay mixture to keep water out. What the plan contemplates is not a regulation, but maybe coordination with the county, right? So the county is the permitting entity for wells to consider making that seal deeper. So the county is the permitting entity for wells to consider making that seal deeper. And so what that would do is it would increase protection from keeping contaminants from getting down into the subsurface. And it would also make that well be a little bit deeper so that should there be an extended drought or something like that, that well is deeper and maybe is not as susceptible to going dry or having issues during those drought cycles. So it's something that's being considered.
It would also increase the cost.
It would also. That's true, but also going deeper would increase the cost.
Through the chair, another question. Yeah, so just because I've developed property before, when you dig down and it's dry hard clay, most places are sand at ten or eleven feet, and you have a twenty foot seal already. Is, I mean, is there studies to show a deeper seal would prevent contamination of groundwater? Or is that just, we're just complying with something somebody's asking us to increase?
Yeah, so there's no, there's no current requirement to go deeper than that twenty foot depth. So, but these studies have shown that the thicker the seal, the more likely you are to prevent contamination from getting deeper into the subsurface. But like you said, there are plate bans, hard bans that can increase the effectiveness of that seal within Yuba County. So again, these are all things that we can work with the county to understand the benefits and the potential costs.
I'm just concerned that it raises the cost for somebody to build a well in the county, it's already hard.
So you're suggesting require that on domestic wells or just ag wells and these pumpable wells?
Yeah, so it would be considered for all wells. Again, this is something that the plan has put forward as a potential project that there are things that can be considered moving forward if that's something that's appropriate to do.
Yeah, because the wells in my area, a lot of them want even seventy five feet deep. And if you go deeper, you get worse water. So you're better off at about fifty feet rather than, so I would hate to see the county make that requirement.
Likewise, I think if your domestic wells, you have the twenty foot seal. I believe all municipal wells have a deeper requirement of it. Exactly. But I agree with the chairman of the city. Where we have shallow wells, we have not hard water. We go deeper, we get harder water. So then you have to have water softener. So shallow wells, at least in our area, much more preferred.
Can I, real quick, Jim, can you give a clarification on what the plan is calling for related to a deeper sanitary seal? Is it a recommendation or a requirement? It is a recommendation to explore that, it was a policy change. So these types of discussions based on what we've learned would determine what we put forward in the future, that's right. It's like explore these types of issues. Explore if we made a separate sanitary seal requirement, it would cause harder water for certain regions in the county. I mean, that's the type of information we would gather. Exactly, and we can modify and move forward what's appropriate. Just wanted to be clear what the plan is calling for and what it isn't calling for.
Alright, any other questions? We'll close the public hearing and understand motion.
Move to the adopt the resolution twenty twenty five dash one, the first one.
Awesome.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright, managers will finish.
Alright, so the beginning of the year, it's pretty nice weather. We're in the low sixties potentially this week. We've had some serious storms the last, I don't know, six weeks or so. The storms have been warm, the snowpack is a little less than average, but the inflow is more than average. That's because these storms are a little warmer, but all in all, we're looking pretty good. We had the Colgate Unit Two unit out for the month of December. That was brought back right before Christmas with no major issues. We're putting out a little over seven hundred CFS at NY twenty eight. All the units are online and available. We're kind of in, we have been in water conservation mode, meaning we're not really generating a lot. We're letting this inflow build up, the new Bullard Bar. Depending on what happens in the next few weeks, we might be in a little bit more aggressive, you know, move some water mode. But right now, things are looking good from a water supply standpoint. But what that means is we've had a little less generation in the last month or so than average, I guess. With all that, we don't have a lot of updates. It's been quiet around here the last two weeks. When you have Christmas and New Year's on Wednesdays, it kind of kills the entire week. So it was nice sitting here and not having the phone ring or the emails going as nuts as normal. So, but we're back to normal. You know, the office is full yesterday and today and the phones are ringing off the hook and things are normal again. So related to communications, the Appeal Democrat covered our grants to Hallway Irrigation Company awarded at our last regular meeting and gave us a shout out for our employees who sponsored senior citizens at Prestige Assisted Living as part of the Blue Zones Santa for a Senior Program. I was featured in an Appeal Democrat article with many leaders and community organizers in Yuba and Sutter Counties, all highlighting plans and expectations for twenty twenty five. Our upcoming sponsorships include the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau's Annual Spray Safe Training Event on January fifteenth and the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement's Youth Mariachi Concert on the eighteenth. And our next board meeting is on the twenty first. We potentially have a special board meeting next Tuesday, the fourteenth, I think fifteen. We'll learn more about that later this week.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you. Director for Doors, Director Bishop, Director Adams.
I'm not in.
I was trying to set an example for him, so I started at this end.
Director Brad.
Director Beer, nothing. I'm going to skip you and go to Andy, so maybe he can make an example.
John, you always have something.
I don't have much either, so.
Just, I just wanted to say thank you guys for posting what you did on social media about the flood history. You can see by my comments, the concerns I brought up before about the community still being kind of traumatized, especially in the South County. So the ninety seven flood had tons and tons and tons of people reminiscing about their stories and everything else. So I'd love to see some continued community engagement on making those people feel safe and knowing what we do and what you guys have done for all these years to improve flood risk reduction. And yeah, but also got some warning yesterday and appreciate everybody here for taking the time to help me get my feet wet and the eight months of training that these guys have given me to get to this point, so appreciate it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to make my little report and mainly it's going to be about the adjournment for all the people that are going to leave during the closed session, I'll be your adjournment. I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Clark Branson. Mary Branson's son lived in my district, he formed up on Springville Road, tragically passed away in a car accident on December twenty eighth, I was seventy. And also President Ferney of North Yuba Water, her mother passed away. So she's out of the country right now, making arrangements with her mother for her service. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of both of those people, one of them to adjourn it. Other than that, I really don't have anything to report. I'm glad we got through all the holidays and getting ready and excited for a lot of brick projects coming up in the pipeline for us. So we all got a lot to do this year. That we will go into further session.
Recording.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakelselfstorage.com. You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company on the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good, the prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here and it's, my dad and mom have known Mary Jane and her dad before too.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Olivehurst.
In Marysville, where roots run deep. McNally Appliances promises to keep the best brands with a smile on its face. We service what we sell, it's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing you can't ignore. With every purchase, you'll love it more. From fridges to washers, all in the line. We install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true. McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, McNally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We service what we sell, no need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bringing your cheer.
McNally Appliances, one nineteen D Street, Marysville. McNallyAppliances.com.